Everybody can hear? I'm Lindsay Madison. I'm with the Fort Scott Area Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to welcome all of you here in person with us this evening, and also all of you watching us online. It is always a pleasure for the Chamber to host these forums, to inform the community on the candidates that you are electing to run our, in this case, our school district, our college, and our city. So, we welcome, we encourage you to listen intently and vote for your best choice of candidates. At this time, I would like for you to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please rise. I pledge allegiance Thank you. We're gonna have Katie Casper give us an invocation this evening. If you'll all please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this community, and for the opportunity, for the freedom, to make a choice, and for those who have fought for the opportunity to make that choice. Please watch over us this evening. Let us remember that we are here for the common good of our community, and that is on loan to us from our children. Let us be cordial, and please help us remember the reason that we're all here. Please let us travel home safely, and keep our community under your loving care in all of our endeavors. Through Jesus' name, amen. Amen. Thank you, Katie. I'd like to just make a few introductions this evening. I'd like to thank Dave Lipe. He is our current Board Chairman of the Chamber, who greeted you as you came in. So, thank you, Dave. We have Katie Casper, who's gonna be our moderator this evening. Katie is with Union State Bank, and our Chairman of the Board-elect for the Chamber for next year. And we have our timer down here, Mr. Bill Macho, who was our Chairman last year. So, thank you, Bill, for doing that for us this evening. We also have Neil Gudanani down here. Neil is a high school student at Fort Scott High School that works part-time down at the Chamber and Visitor Center, and helps with different things that we need. So, thank you, Neil. And again, thank you, all of you, for attending, because without you, there's no reason to host a forum. So, again, we're glad you're here. A few remarks on behalf of our County Clerk, Ashley Shelton. She is not able to be here with us tonight. She had parent-teacher conference. So, advanced voting actually began today at the Bourbon County Courthouse. The hours for advanced voting will be Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. And just until tomorrow, only until 6:00 p.m. is the only day that it goes till 6:00 p.m. Early voting ends at noon on Monday, and that is actually November 1st. There's a typo on the date there. But early voting will end at noon on that Monday prior to the election. And then, on Election Day, you'll actually vote at your polling place from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, a reminder to take your ID with you when you vote. And if you do not know your polling place, you can call up to the Clerk's office and get that location. 223-3800, extension 802. So, this evening, our forum will go in the order of U234 School Board, Fort Scott Community College Board of Trustees, and the Fort Scott City Commission. The candidates' names will be drawn randomly for the order of statements and questions. And all questions will be answered from up here at the podium. The candidates will participate in the following format: a one-minute opening statement. They will answer three questions, and they'll have 90 seconds to respond to those questions. And then, they will have the opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement. We do have a couple of candidates that were not able to attend tonight. Those are noted on the back along with the full list of candidates. And a couple of those have submitted a statement that Katie will read when she gets to those races. So, I believe that's all I have. The recording of the forum can be found later, for any of you that are here that want to look back, on our Facebook page, Fort Scott Area Chamber of Commerce. And I intend to also save that later to our YouTube channel, which is Fort Scott Area Chamber of Commerce. So, thank you. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Katie. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay. As Lindsay said, we're going to begin with our one-minute opening statement. We're starting with the U234 School Board. And for the U234 School Board, people will vote for one in each position, position four, five, and six. And then, the highest vote count in each of those positions will earn a four-year term. Now, two of our candidates that are up here this evening are either unopposed, or their opposition couldn't be here for whatever reason. And so, we're going to start with those two, and then, we will go to the position five, which there are three here this evening that will make a statement. So, beginning with your one-minute statement, I'm gonna begin with Dave Stewart.
Thank you. I guess everybody can hear me fine. I'm David Stewart. I'm running unopposed. This is my second term. When I look back at when I ran originally, I never thought that we would be dealing with COVID and what we have. And so, two years of that, I served as your Board President. And in July, James Wood has taken that over. And so, we now really got to focus back on education. We've really worked on the individual plan of study, curriculum, and envisioning goals. And hopefully, we can continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. For position six, we have Brian Allen.
Hi, my name is Brian Allen. I'm a lifelong resident of Fort Scott. I have three children, five grandchildren, and hopefully, some of my grandchildren will be attending U234. I've spent the last 14 years as a teacher's aide in the automotive tech area at the Fort Scott High School, and recently left to go to work at Bourbon County. I feel I want to stay involved in the kids that I left behind's lives, and that's one of the reasons why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. For position five, we have three here, and we're going to do a random draw on who gets to go first.
Gary Billions.
Gary Billions.
Hi there. My name is Gary Billions. I'm seeking reelection to the USD 234 Board of Education. One major reason for that in that is business left undone. We have many items that are on our agenda, and we're able to start moving to deal with those items as we are doing our, hopefully, closing, having to deal with COVID-19. First and foremost on my list is curriculum. We have a curriculum redesign in play, and I would really like to see that completed before I am done with the Board. I have some more items that I will mention on my closing statement.
Thank you, Gary. Who's next?
Casey Bolden.
Casey Bolden.
First of all, I want to thank you all for being here, because this is church night. We got homework with kids, dinner to cook, everything. So, thank you, the ones that came. I appreciate it. My name is Casey Bolden. I moved here in 1975. I broke down in Fort Scott at Six and National. That's how I got here. So many people helped me. And I thought, wow, what a great town to raise children. And so, I stayed. I married a local man. I worked in the insurance industry for 32 years. We opened a small business. Over the years, helped several positions in the insurance business, hopefully, I can repeat this, from answering phones, lead position, answering questions, trading, rebutting errors, paying high-dollar payments, and have worked on my own at home for several companies. I never miss work, and I am very good at finishing what I started. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. And Mike Miles.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Some of you know who I am, and some of you have only heard my name. Allow me to introduce myself. I'm Mike Miles. I'm a resident at Fort Scott since 2000. I work as a public servant for the city of Fort Scott. I'm a proud father of three children in the USD 234 school system, Gavin, Ben, and Lucy, and a little one, Emmett, that's three short years away. I also have my wonderful wife, Danielle, by my side, and she is my strength. Over the years, I've learned just how important leadership is in all that we do, and I'm thankful in my years of growing up. I have been fortunate to have great mentors to help me along the way. I've had many people wanting me to enter this phase in my life, and after much thought, I feel it's time for a new generation to step up to the plate and keep our school system great the way it is. We have been blessed to have great people in the leadership roles in this district, and I know I can and will bring new ideas that would only help strengthen our school system. I know how important that is in this role, and I'm determined to bring that to the table. We need to remember, everything needs to be refreshed from time to time, and I feel we have the right opportunity to do so now.
And your minute is up. Thank you. Please, everyone still like me when we get through this. I've had to do this a few times. Someone told me they had nightmares about me standing there with a microphone telling them to stop. Okay, so the next phase of this is the questions. I'm going to ask three questions, and I'm gonna go through them one at a time. So, I'll ask question one. Everyone will come up and answer the question, and we'll continue to go in that order. And we're gonna start once again with our unopposed candidates. So, David, and some of these questions are kind of a two-part question. So, bear with me if you don't understand. I'll repeat the question. Question one. Do you have immediate family that works for USD 234? And do you feel that if you do, it is a conflict of interest or not? If not, why? And if yes, please explain.
I do not. But I do know that we have other people that do have immediate family, and I do think that is a conflict of interest. So, when we go to vote, I think we should consider that when you do vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. You're gonna go to question two after everybody else gets to answer that one. So, Brian, you're up next. And I'll repeat the question. Do you have immediate family that works for U234 School District? Do you feel that is a conflict of interest? Yes or no?
I do have immediate family. My daughter is a teacher at Eugene Ware. And my brother is the janitor at the gym at the high school. I personally don't feel it would be a conflict of interest, because number one, we don't share a pillow. So, I'm not gonna be telling them things that I might if it was my spouse. Number two, and the other thing that I would do is if something came up regarding them personally, I would excuse myself from the meeting and then return after that was done.
Thank you. The next will be up to what Neil tells me.
Mike Miles.
Mike Miles. Will, if you would like to. Do you have immediate family that works for U234? If yes or no, do you feel that is a conflict of interest? Why?
I have a mother-in-law and a sister-in-law that work as parents at the high school. That's kind of a tough question, because, like, I'll touch on what Brian said. It could be a conflict of interest, just depending what you're dealing with. So, if you're dealing with budget or anything that's voting on what the teachers need, you need to take in everybody's opinion and facts and work on the Board and come together at terms. But if it involves you directly or something that you could benefit from, then you excuse yourself and abstain from any kind of vote.
Thank you.
It's gonna be Gary Billions.
Gary Billions. You don't need me.
I do have immediate family that's employed by the USD 234 School District. My wife has been there for over 41 years. She was there before I arrived on the scene, and I was fortunate enough to meet her and convince her that she should be my wife. She is the administrative assistant superintendent and a deputy clerk. I honestly have not run across a situation that is really a conflict of interest. There are times where I question whether or not she has information that she won't share with me. But that's okay. I have information that I can't share with her. So, to this point, we have not had a conflict of interest, and I don't anticipate one in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. That leaves Casey.
And the question?
The question is, do you have an immediate family member that works for USD 234? And if yes or no, do you feel that is a conflict of interest and why?
First of all, I have no family that I'm aware of that works for USD 234. I also feel that that could be a conflict if you have family. Do you share everything? I know my husband and I have been married, I don't know how many years. We share a lot of opinions, a lot of ideas. But could it be a conflict? I think it could. And that's all I'm gonna say on that.
Thank you. You give it to Dave. All right, question two. Do you feel like the Board meetings at U234 should be livestreamed on YouTube for transparency? Why or why not?
That's a good question. Last month, the Board meeting, I recommended that we go to a livestream for the public, because we have talked about transparency, and it was time to get to that point. I believe by the next meeting, we will be livestreaming meetings.
I absolutely do believe they should be livestreamed. I work for the county, and I know how important it is for people who are watching our county and city commission meetings, who can't be there because of work or whatever. And there are people who can't be at the Board meetings themselves. And it's nice to be able to come back and be able to watch that at your convenience. And you also get to hear exactly what was said.
Thank you.
It's gonna be Casey Bolden.
Casey? You're first, isn't it?
No. I agree 100% on the streaming. I was to attend the last one. I had a bad accident, could not attend. We have three little children that we have custody of. One is a crisis. Streaming would solve a lot of problems. 100% support it. I do. Thank you.
Mike Miles.
Mike.
I agree 100%. It needs to be open to the public and livestreamed. Everybody's busy in their life. Now, in this day and age, we got kids, we got activities we're always at. So, to be able to come back and see that, watch it, like Brian said, to be able to hear exactly what was stated, that's a huge benefit to have out to the public and for them to be able to livestream.
And Gary.
As a member of the Fort Scott City Commission, way back in the day, we started to video our meetings so that they could be played back over the local information channel on cable. So, I am very supportive of livestreaming. I think it allows our people that are not able to, for whatever reason, to be able to see what's going on at the meeting. There's not anything that we can hide as far as open meeting. The closed sessions are not open to the public, so they would not be livestreamed. But I know the equipment has been ordered, and it should be, should be, but no guarantees ready for our next meeting.
And the final question for U234 candidates. If you are currently on the Board, please list all of your accomplishments since elected.
Accomplishments? We hired a new superintendent three years ago. When that happened, he brought an individual plan of study that he wanted to do with our children. And I was in favor of that. I don't believe it's as far along as I want it to be, but that is still in the works. You know, all kids don't learn the same in a classroom setting. And so, I think this could be really valuable to our kids in the future. I spoke about curriculum earlier. We hired a new lady to take care of our curriculum, and I feel like she's really brought the curriculum along at this point, too. And so, that's good as well. We kept our kids in school last year. There was a vote. It was 4-3 to go start the school year in-person. And I voted to keep our kids in school at that point. Also, we had another vote last year. I think we quarantined 160 kids last year that wore a mask. I don't believe any of those kids had COVID, but we still sent them home for 14 days. And so, the learning wasn't, they weren't learning anything at home. So, we made a motion to not quarantine our kids if they had a mask on. And so, I felt like we really made some good progress there.
Thank you. Brian, your question's gonna be just a little bit modified. Since you are not a current member of the Board, please tell us what you intend to do different if you are elected.
I really, I'll be honest. I'm not going into this election or into this with any kind of agenda. My main focus is going to be to do what's best for our kids and our staff. That's what we're here for. We're here for them. And I think that some of the things that we push as educators with the four-year colleges and things like that, I feel that we need to be being more of a push toward trade schools and such. I think these kids need to have the same recognition when they go off to a trade school as if they were going to Kansas. And that's, like I said, I have no agenda. I just wanna do what's best for my community, the kids, and the staff.
Thank you. Neil, who's first on this?
It's Gary Billions.
Gary. Please list all your accomplishments since elected to the best of your ability.
Well, it goes back a few years, but probably the very best that we've done are accomplishments in the time that I've been on the Board, who worked very, very hard to have a $40 million bond issue voted on and passed. And we've been able to remodel and take the old Juco wing down at the high school and remodel to bring our technology up to where it is today. We are a one-on-one school district. The football field, I'm not sure, has anything to do with education, but that was part of the bond issue. And everybody seems to be very proud of that. Everything that's been done has been done well. And if it was not done well, then we sent our people to find out how it was going to be fixed. We began our new curriculum, revamped six years ago. We've had a couple of hiccups in between. One of them actually was my fault. The other one, I had nothing to do with bringing COVID to our communities.
Thank you.
Mike Miles.
Mike Miles. Please tell us what you intend to do differently if you are elected.
So, I've reached out to several teachers, students, admins, and I've kinda got a collective census from all of them. And the biggest thing I think we need to look at is getting the morale back, not only in one school, but all four. It seems to be that everybody's on a different page, and that's directly from the people that are working in our district. So, I think we need to take a big look at the top and work our way down, and get everybody on the same page and working for the common goal. Because without the teachers having the correct curriculum or the proper curriculum that they can teach and make our kids excel, then we're failing our staff, and we're failing our students. And after all, there are futures that we need to look out for. So, short answer, we need to hold people accountable that the teachers can come to school and feel respected and feel like they're doing a great job and be rewarded by that. And if we can get that instilled into teachers, then they can put it to our kids, and that's how we shape our future.
Thank you. And Casey. Please tell us what you intend to do differently if elected.
Well, I'm kinda like Brian. I have no agenda. The agenda I have is that parents need some more choices. Choices, in my closing statement, I'll get that. I have three children right now that we have custody of that we brought in from Texas. We have a crisis child and two other children. I have one in each school, okay? I run crazy all the time with one of them. I don't think that everybody, like Mr. Miles said, is on the same page. I think all children should be looked at, not as a discipline problem, but maybe where they came from. So, maybe more teaching or more understanding that not all children are in the same, come out of the same box. So, that's pretty much my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll be moving into the portion where each candidate will give their closing statement, and you each have two minutes to give that statement. And we'll start with Mr. Stewart.
I will need the two minutes. But thank you. I just wanna thank the community for the past support that you've given me. Thank you.
Brian Allen.
I wanna start off by thanking everybody for being here tonight. I know that a lot of people have things to do, and it's good that you're wanting to be involved. I just wanna repeat that I want what's best for Fort Scott. I want what's best for USD 234. I'm a proud graduate. Can't wait for the next reunion. And I agree, I think that we need to instill, and I know that Ted has mentioned this before, as an employee, that we need to re-instill that tiger pride. When I was in high school, I mean, we were proud, proud to be Tigers, and I would like to see that again. Not just at football games, but in the hallways. Thank you.
So, I have a statement from Tracy King, who is also running in position six against Brian. She was not able to be here this evening. Tracy King, "But does it help kids?" That was a key phrase used by one of my favorite mentors that has continued to resonate with me to this day. How decisions impact kids should always be our first consideration. Hi, my name is Tracy King, and I'm running for position six on the Fort Scott School Board. Your vote on my behalf would give you a chance to voice your concerns to help students in USD 234. Please do not hesitate to exercise the many communication possibilities available to contact me. I will be happy to respond to questions via email, or by phone, 620-412-8500. No concern will be too large or too small. Working together, we can make the school experience more positive for all students and help them reach their maximum potential. I will appreciate your support as we work as a team to provide the best education possible for our children." And then, I have a statement from Josh Query, who is also running for position six. "Thank you for inquiring about my candidacy for School Board. However, I will be withdrawing my name. Just after declaring my candidacy, my wife has been hired as the principal of Eugene Ware Elementary, and I do not want to cause any strain on the wonderful relationships she has with the superintendent administrators and other USD 234 faculty, nor do we want there to be any perceptions of nepotism on our part. I believe there are fair-minded individuals running that are great candidates. So, with the Board and the excellent administration, I believe this district is heading in the right direction. Sincerely, Joshua Query."
Casey Bolden.
Casey Bolden.
My closing statement. The goal this year was to focus on the child. That should be our goal, not just what was the School Board's one thing. You know, it was to focus on the child. It's kinda like their theme. We should focus on the child 24/7. As parents or guardians, we need choices. The definition of choices The definition of choice is an act of selecting or a discussion when forced with two or more possibilities. Give parents more of a choice. Listen to what they have to say. We have state guidelines we have to adhere to, but our kids are our legacy. We should not be voting based on religion, nationality, who might get upset if we don't vote with the majority. Sometimes we need to stand back and look at the big picture. These are our children. I have one in each school this year. Our job is to make sure they have the best education. Let's make sure that all children are treated, no matter what. Some children are labeled as discipline problems when actually they have issues that are physical. They have been, where they have been before, in place with responsible parents. We have changed these children's lives. We have raised six and still raising two more. Or, we have raised six and two more makes eight. You have choices. Choose the candidate that will listen and vote according to District Five's needs and vote Casey Bolden for change. Remember, focus on the child. Thank you.
It's going to be Gary.
Gary Billions?
In my opening one minute, I mentioned that one of my desires was to either curriculum that has been put into place completely. We are partially there. COVID did a number on us for about a year and a half, and we weren't able to move forward with it. Right now, we are, our curriculum director is working tirelessly, not only to build a curriculum, but to find a curriculum that our teachers will buy into and teach our kids. Part of that curriculum is the individual learning plan for each and every student. Beginning in the middle school, each student is given the opportunity to say, I want to be a fireman. How do I come up with a good education plan to get me to be the best fireman that I can be? So each student will have that available to them, and I'm anxious to see how those play out over the years. Staff retention is so important to us, not just teachers, but all of our staff. Right now, we're in a critical bus driver shortage and teacher shortage and substitutes. I applied for a grant to come up with a summer meals program for the students in our district in Bourbon County so that we can keep good nutritional food in our kids all year round. It doesn't do any good to feed them just during the school year, but we need to do that. I appreciate the confidence that people have given me, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve you. I would-
And your two minutes is now up.
I would appreciate your vote, but whatever, get out and vote.
Thank you. Mike Miles?
Like I said in my opening statement, I've served and advocated for the safety's needs of our community's residents for 15 years as a public servant with the Fort Scott Fire Department. My knowledge and experience will help me provide leadership and build a vision all can share in. My running for the school board will allow me to continue working and advocating for the safety and education of all children in our community. I believe that a school board must be responsive and receptive to parents, staff, students, and the community at large, encouraging and open dialogue. The board must take input from all groups and weigh all facts before making any decision. A board member is a trustee of the community that elects him or her. The trustee must be accessible and willing to collaborate with all members of the community, and that includes direct staff. Anyone that comes before the school board has the right to be heard, not just to speak. A school board member must build public understanding, support, and participation. My efforts as a board member would center on serving all of the children in the community. One child is no important than the other. A key issue for our school board is create a long-term vision, mapping a course that provides the necessary opportunities students need to reach their full potential. The board is responsible for establishing and maintaining a structure that supports this vision, empowers the staff, and provides leadership. With my background and love for our district, I can help provide the necessary leadership to keep the district on an even keel. I strongly believe that we have tremendous teachers and staff working with our children. We must re-establish morale amongst all district employees and work to return harmony throughout the district. Education takes place in the classroom, and the board's efforts must focus on enhancing and enriching what goes on there. By working together, we can all share in the knowledge and satisfaction that we have provided for educational needs for all the children, and I build a district where students, parents, staff feel they are welcome and that they belong. I ask for your support because I want what's best for my kids. I want what's best for your kids and our teachers. I don't have a family who works at the board office. There's no conflict of interest in me serving on the board. We need to eliminate any liability of board members serving to protect their own best interests. It's time for a change. I ask for your support as a writing candidate for USD 234, Position Five.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you. It's, we appreciate your willingness to put your name in the hat, and that concludes this portion of our form. Thank you. Yes, please give him a hand. Next, we have our Fort Scott Community College Board of Trustees. If you are a member of that group, please make your way to the stage. The members running for these positions are John Barlesmeyer, Jim Pughens, Brian Holt, Bill Meyer, and Kevin Whacker. And it appears that Brian and John are the only two that were able to make it this evening. So for Fort Scott Community College Board of Trustees, you vote for three or fewer. All three positions will have a four-year term on the Board of Trustees. And so Neil is going to draw at random to see which one of you gets to give your one-minute opening statement.
It's going to be John Barlesmeyer.
John Barlesmeyer.
Good evening. My name is John Barlesmeyer. I was born and raised in Fort Scott and have lived in Bourbon County all my life. I graduated from Fort Scott Schools and Fort Scott Community College. After graduating from the community college, I went to work with my father at the jewelry store. I purchased a business for my parents in 1990. Current and past leadership experience include 11 years, I'm sorry, four terms serving on Fort Scott Community College Board of Trustees, Chamber of Commerce member, Bourbon County Arts Council member, Bourbon County Historic Preservation Charter member, French of the Fort, Board Member of Green Bush Consortium, past Fort Scott Scottish Rite representative and coach numerous youth recreation programs.
Thank you, John. Brian?
Good evening. My name is Brian Holt. I grew up in Bourbon County and Uniontown, actually. Moved back here in 2005 with my family. I work as president of Union State Bank, which has been in our family since 1901. We have a vested interest in our community, and my kids are growing older and leaving the house. And so I feel like it's time that I serve in some capacity in the public forum. And so I decided that I'd throw my hat in the ring for the Fort Scott Community College Board of Trustees. If I were elected, I would be an advocate for the taxpayer, number one. And I think the community college is a wonderful asset, so I look forward to learning more about how we can make it the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Now we will move into the question portion. There are three questions. You have 90 seconds to answer each question. And who will-
It's going to be Brian.
Brian, you could have just stated that we're going to get our exercise tonight. Okay, so this is kind of a two-part question. Do you believe the meeting should be aired on YouTube live streaming so that taxpaying community can view the happenings on the board? If so, would you work towards making this happen? And if not, please explain why.
To the first part, yes. I mean, I, there's no reason not to do that anymore. It's easy and cheap, so absolutely. And if I were elected, I would work towards making that happen, so.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No. The Board of Trustees has transmitted their meetings by sound for quite a while, and we've already been doing the live streaming for quite a while, too. So that's already happening. I believe it can be picked up by the, going to the Fort Scott Community College website. And this has been going on, it's already going on. And we've been doing it, especially since we had the COVID problem. We were opening it up to anybody that wanted to use it. So that's already happening at the college.
It's going to be Brian.
Brian? This is similar to our last group of candidates. What do you plan on bringing to the table to, what are your goals and aspirations if you are elected as a board member?
Well, goals and aspirations. I want our community to prosper, and I think that the community college, as I mentioned before, is a great asset for Fort Scott and Bourbon County. And we really should let John go first because he's been doing this for a while, and so he can say what we're already doing, and I can be like, yeah, that's good. But really, to see the community college and how it fits into the overall mission and vision for the county, the city, and the school districts, we're all working together towards the same thing. We're a tiny area. There's 15,000 people plus or minus in our community. And so the saying, a rising tide floats all boats. If the community college is doing well, the school districts are doing well, the county's going to do well. And that bodes well for all of us, whether we're small business owners or work for the school district or whatever. So, I mean, that's my vision. And to be quite honest, I have a lot to learn about how things work at the community college. I don't have all the answers. I just have my opinions and a willingness to learn. Thank you.
So John, your portion of the question is a bit different as you are currently on the board. Please list the accomplishments that you have made in your term and what you could plan on bringing in the future.
That's really tough. I've been on the board for four terms. Gosh, so much has happened. I think probably the best thing that's happened when I have been on the board was when we hired Alicia Johnston to be the president. She comes from Coffeyville area. She has an agricultural background. And if you don't know it, the community college is heavily involved in rodeo programs and beach judging, lots of agricultural-type things. What I'd like to say about the community colleges, the community colleges in Kansas are really different. They're really flexible. I've just been approached, oh, a few months ago, by some people from Pleasanton who wanted to set up a trades program in Pleasanton that would be associated with the community college, through the community college. And that's, that's really something that's very important to me, to be able to be flexible enough that we can offer programs to help put people to work. It's just something that's really good. We have the CTEC program in Pittsburgh, which is done through Fort Scott Community College, and we teach, gosh, building trades, electricians, plumbers, stonemasons. There are probably seven or eight more programs that we're doing right now to, to help people get a job.
And your time is now expired.
Okay.
You might just stay there. Question number three. Do you believe working together between the city, county, USD 234, and Fort Scott Community College is important? If so, do you support monthly or quarterly meetings with all groups involved? And please tell why you think that is or is not important.
No question. That's very, very important. And I know that we have had several meetings, I won't say many, but several, not enough, between 234 and the community college. And that's something that we need to build on and build, make it really, really strong. Because the ability to graduate from Fort Scott High School with classes that you, juniors and seniors can take classes at the college, community college, for college credit, and it's just like a stepping stone to move on if you want to go ahead and go to a four-year institution. But we're a part of this community, and we can't just be out there by ourselves. We participate in as many things as we can. We donate time. We donate our building, our facilities. We do a lot for the community. And that is not just for Fort Scott. This is for Bourbon County in Southeast Kansas.
Thank you. Brian? You want me to repeat the question?
No, thanks. Thank you. I think I made it pretty clear. I absolutely think that that is critical to our future success as a community. Do I think meetings should happen monthly? Probably not. I mean, meetings are everywhere, and too many meetings is not necessarily a good thing. Quarterly, to some extent, I think, might be necessary. I know that, you know, for example, the community college has a representative that meets on the the new Bourbon County Ready Group, and so there's, there's the ability to influence that in that way. I don't think monthly would be necessary, but quarterly might be helpful just to make sure that we're all on the same page and moving forward in the right direction. Thank you.
So you're going to stay up there.
And so you can stay and give your two-minute closing statement.
In closing, I guess if I'm really, really brutally honest with all of you, I would say that I'd rather not run for something like this. Like most of you, we've got plenty of things to do otherwise, but we need, we need people to run for these positions. I know just in talking with Jim Pughens personally, you know, Jim wants to live in a retirement age type thing. And so we need people that are willing to step up and serve in these capacities. And when I considered the options, I felt like the Fort Scott Community College trustee position would probably be the best fit for, you know, my training and education and profession. And so that's the direction that I've decided to go. If you're willing to vote for me, I would certainly appreciate it. I didn't think enough to have people sit in the audience with T-shirts that say, "Vote Brian." Should have. So, but I guess in closing, again, like other people have said, thank you all for coming out. This is a great way, I think, to educate people on who's on the ballot. And again, if you want to vote for me, I would appreciate it, and I'd look forward to working with the college to make it the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. John?
I am running for the Board of Trustees of Fort Scott Community College because I believe a strong community college in Bourbon County promotes an educated community and helps build and keep a robust local economy. I believe every citizen should contribute their time, energy, and expertise, if not only to better themselves, but to give back to the community. As a Fort Scott Community College graduate and lifelong resident of Bourbon County, I want to continue to promote Fort Scott Community College as a viable and sustaining asset to our community in Southeast Kansas. As a board member, I will continue to contribute to economic development by meeting the current and changing needs of our community and local employers. I will support academic and technical programs that allow students to prepare themselves for future employment and to become productive members of society. I will press state legislators for more funding for education, not just for post-secondary education, but for all public education entities. Fort Scott Community College should continue to offer high-quality academic and technical programs. A saying that I have, that I like to refer to once in a while by a fellow named Albert Pike, "What we have done for ourselves alone dies with us. What we do for others and the world remains and is immortal." I would appreciate your vote to reelect me as a member of the Fort Scott Community College Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in giving these two gentlemen a round of applause for their willingness to put their names in the hat. And remember, you can vote for three or fewer for the Fort Scott Community College Board of Trustees. So next up, we have Fort Scott City Commission candidates. Those running for city commission- Those running for City Commission are Michael Hoyt, Josh Jones, Ann Rollins, and I'm gonna mispronounce your last name, Tim. Tim Van Hooky. Judy Warren, Matthew Wells, and Willa Wilson. Those running for the City Commission, you can vote for three or fewer. The two highest votes will have a four-year term, and the third highest will get a two-year term. And so, once they've all made their way up here, we will do a random draw for a one-minute opening statement. So unofficially, Willa may have withdrawn. And so she will not be joining us this evening. Who's first on our list, Neil?
Matthew Wells.
Matthew Wells. You get to give your opening statement first, and you have one minute.
You got a 30-second timer? My name is Matthew Wells. If you don't know me, I'm a husband, I'm a father, a business owner here in town. I volunteer my time at the fort. I volunteer for the Friends of the Fort and the Vice President of that organization. I volunteer in many organizations around town. I feel that service to others is where we truly find we can grow and help out our community. I love Fort Scott. I've lived here since 1987, when my father moved us here. And I love this town, and I see great things in its future. I appreciate you voting for me, so that we can work together to make this town great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Hoyt.
Michael Hoyt.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. I arrived here at Fort Scott in 2017, full-time, with a mission, or a purpose, of caring for my elderly and, sorry to say, failing mother. But I was assigned a mission to advocate for the citizens of Fort Scott. I've spent two years coming to you live and in color into your living room, sometimes once a week, sometimes twice in one day, advocating for the citizens of this town with no self-interest objectives. Only objective is to provide a voice for the people and to hold the elected officials accountable. I plan to do everything I can in the role and apply the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Jones.
Josh Jones.
For those who don't know me, my name is Josh Jones. Been here my whole life. My family actually moved here nearly 200 years ago. Been married to my wife for 21 years. I got three kids. My two daughters are in local colleges, going to school to become teachers. My son's a junior in high school and also a sophomore out here at the JuCo. And they're really the reason that I ran, or wanted to run, to be a City Commissioner. You know, we talk about declining population, and that's where it starts. When kids get out of high school, and they go off to college, there's nothing for them to come back to. And so my main goal, when I got on the board, was two things: lowering taxes and building the population back up. And so with those two things, that takes care of almost everything else. I mean, we gotta look at our kids, we gotta focus on that. And that's not just my kids, everyone's kids. And that's what we all gotta focus on, and that's the reason why I want to be a Commissioner.
Thank you, Josh.
Ann Rollins.
Ann Rollins.
Hi, I am Ann Rollins, and I'm running for City Commissioner. My daughter, two granddaughters, and a great-granddaughter, and I moved to Fort Scott two and a half years ago from Oregon. We were looking for a small community, an old house, friendly neighbors, and lots of volunteer opportunities. My daughter found Fort Scott on a map, found the three-story Victorian on East Wall Street, and so two of our boxes were checked off. We have such great neighbors, which is another box checked off. In fact, our neighbors across the street helped unload our U-Haul when we arrived and didn't even know us. There are so many more volunteer choices, and it is mind-boggling. Yep, check the box off, too. I found Old Fort Scott Genealogy Society fit my volunteer wish. I have spent many hours and loved the visitors, research, and teaching. I also helped to launch the Bourbon County Tours last year.
And your minute has now expired.
Judy Warren.
Judy Warren.
Hello there, I'm Judy Warren. Pete told me to speak up, so I'm going to be loud. If I get too loud, just say, "Calm down, Judy." I moved to Fort Scott almost two and a half years ago. I had visited Fort Scott several times over the years with my children and fell in love with it. I retired from the state of Kansas in social services after being there for 17 years. So I thought, "I'm gonna retire." So I got a little bored, so I went to work for the school district. So I am now a par educator. I've worked for USD 234 for two years now. I love it. I work with the special-ed kids. They teach me something every day, and I am so happy to be here. The people of this town are amazing. I am in great company here, as you already know. These are fine candidates. I hope you pick me as one of them, but if you don't, please get out and vote.
Thank you, Judy. And that leaves Tim Van Hooky. Did I say that right? All right.
Hi, I'm Tim Van Hooky. First, I want to thank the chamber, the folks in the audience, and the candidates for the opportunity to hold the forum in this historic facility, a facility that I would like to see hopefully restored and benefit our community. I've been married to my wife Cheryl for 35 years. I'm a U.S. Air Force Disabled Veteran. I've worked for the same company for 20 years, and I'm involved with several local organizations, including the Rotary Club, Good Old Days Committee, Mary Queen of Rachel's Church, American Legion and Veterans of Four Moors. I would tell you upfront that I don't own a small business in town, but I heavily support and applaud those that do, as they are the key to our city's health and growth. I'm not related to anyone that either works for the city or county, or serves in an elected position. I have no personal agenda that might even subconsciously impact my decisions in putting Fort Scott first. A new perspective is good, and we need some fresh ideas on the representation of a strong voice to move Fort Scott forward.
Thank you.
Matthew Wells.
Okay, Matthew Wells is gonna be our first one to answer question one. You'll have 90 seconds to answer each question, and we'll go through random draws, well. The first question. There has been a lot of talk about the 1987 sales tax. Would you support moving all that revenue and putting it towards streets? And if so, which department would you take that from to make it happen?
As you can tell from my campaign slogan, "Repair, Build, and Restore," I am in favor of all tax dollars that have been dedicated to where they should go, to go to those places. We need to start using the money that we're paying taxes for to repair our infrastructure here in town. So yes, I believe that that money should go where it was intended, what the citizens voted for it to be used for, it should be used for. There are many places that we can save money within our city. We have many opportunities to work in partnership with the county to lower costs in the city. We have positions within our city that we can combine with the county. We have the availability of using county facilities and/or getting rid of the current building that we're in, and moving all of those offices to another location. All of these will free up extra money that will allow us to reinvest into our infrastructure, as well as to hire some individuals who are gonna help our street department get the work done that needs to be done. So I ask you to join with me in doing the work that needs to be done in this town. We have a great town, that as many of you have seen and witnessed as you drive down the roads, and as you see when it rains, there are many problems that need to be fixed, these problems that need to be fixed now. And I ask you to join with me and with the other people who want to get that accomplished. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ann Rollins.
Ann Rollins. There's been a lot of talk about the 1987 sales tax. Would you support moving all that revenue and putting it towards streets? And if so, which department would you take that from to make it happen?
I don't condone taking it from one department, putting it in another department, because that's what we need it at the moment. I believe that the money goes where it was supposed to go. The voters voted to say where they wanted it. They've said what they want. Leave it where it's supposed to be. If there's a department that no longer exists that that's involved with, yeah, give it to the roads. The roads, or sewers, or water lines, we have to get those fixed first before we go onto things. You can have a nice-looking house on the roof, because you have a new roof, but if you don't have anything but rotten wood inside, it's gonna fall. And that's what's happening right now. We're not the only city that this is happening to. We just have to figure out how we're gonna take care of it.
Tim Van Hooky.
Tim Van Hooky. There's been a lot of talk about the 1987 sales tax. Would you support moving all that revenue and putting it towards streets? And if so, which department would you take that from to make that happen?
No, I would not support doing that. Right now, Fort Scott has a lot of needs beyond streets. Streets are extremely important, absolutely. However, if we're taking about, potentially risking taking money away from first responders, or the police department, or other departments, no. I believe that there is a plan out there for the streets. I've watched the commission work on it. But as far as the other needs that we have in this town, everything from some of the structural issues, the lack of safe, affordable housing, and other areas within our city, I don't think you can just make a car plunge cut and say, "All this money goes away, and now we gotta find where we're gonna pull it from." So I think we need to walk and chew gum at the same time and figure out ways that we can do both together.
Thank you.
Josh Jones.
Josh Jones. Would you like me to repeat the question? You got it?
Well, first, I want to say that there's been a lot of talk about the 1987 sales tax and what the voters voted on, and simply what's been stated is not true. And there's laws out there showing why. But I will say that I'm not, right now, part of that sales tax. We spend, I would say, 40% towards the streets. Two years ago, we had a $500,000 budget for streets. Next year, we have $2 million. So we need a commission that can focus and work together with the money we've gotten and are getting, before we worry about, we need to do stuff before we keep on saying, "More money, more money, more money." What's gonna happen is, you focus solely on one thing, and then something else is gonna suffer. So if we take that money out of fire, if we take it out of police, if we take it out of the airport, in 20 years, we'll be saying, you know, "You guys didn't look at police, didn't look at fire, didn't look at airport." Now we need to focus on that. So it's not fix one thing now, it's fix everything now. And so we need to focus on, as a Commissioner, it's more than just one item. And you gotta be open-minded enough to look at every aspect of city and not just focus on one thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Warren.
Judy Warren. Would you like me to repeat the question?
While I'm not in favor of taking that money out either, I do understand, and we all know, everybody that lives in this town that pays taxes, which are high, and water bills, which are high, we need to keep this spending a little more reasonable, and I believe that we all agree, I think all of us on this stage agree here this evening, that we need to keep our priorities straight and not give in to special demands from outsiders, friends, family, the good old boy network.
Ann, Michael Hoyt.
Yes, I've done a lot of talking on the 1987 sales tax going to the right place. But it's just like I've been hooked on food for 63 years, and you can't just give it up overnight. I believe it should be a gradual move back, and I had proposed that to the commission, and it was rejected, or not entertained, should I say. We should gradually move ourself back to what the will of the people were in 1983 and 1987, to give the money to the streets. Now, there were also some caveats, and the lawyers all liked these catch-all phrases or workarounds, where we would put money into economic development. I think there was some mention of the industrial park and tax relief. Well, they've given us no tax relief. Let's put the money back gradually to the streets. I'm not saying cut it off completely, but let's, in a thought-through and careful budget reassignment, allocate more money to our streets and infrastructure, where we could improve it, not just patch it.
Thank you. Now, moving on to our second question.
Ann Rollins.
Ann Rollins, you'll be the first to answer. There has been a lot of cooperation between the city and the county over the past two years. If you think that's a good thing, how could you support that to continue it in the future? And if not, please let us know how you would change that.
I think anything that is gonna help us spread our tax money farther is a good thing. If we need to work with the county, the county has things that we don't have, we have things the county doesn't have. It's called partnership. And that's what we need to do. We need to have partnership on the commission, we need to have partnership in our town, we need to have partnership with each other. You can do this through volunteering, whatever it takes, but the fact that we have already started a process to work with the county to accomplish things that we wouldn't have been able to do, I think is a major plus for our city.
Thank you.
It's gonna be Tim Van Hooky.
Tim Van Hooky. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure.
There's been a lot of cooperation between the city and the county over the past two years. If you think that's a good thing, how could you support the continuation of that? If you think it's a bad thing, how would you change it?
Well, I'm not saying it's good or bad, but I do believe that where it makes sense, we should consolidate services. However, these unified services should be scrutinized heavily for true savings and service reductions. If we're saving money, but the taxpayers are receiving a lower standard of service, that's a concern. I think that any consolidation should have a set of measurable goals, reviewed regularly, that define if it is truly a savings and if service levels are maintained or exceeded for our citizens. Consolidation or unifying particular areas of Fort Scott resources with the county may be beneficial, but as Fort Scott has the largest population paying both city and county taxes, we need to make sure that this is a merging of services and not an acquisition of our city resources. So I would like to scrutinize that very much, each and every one, and measure it.
Thank you.
Matthew Wells.
Matthew Wells.
As far as working together, I think it's what everyone would want for us to do. As the county becomes stronger, our city becomes stronger. As our city becomes stronger, the county becomes stronger. Why would we not take every opportunity to work together to help grow not only the county around us, but our city as well? As the county brings in more jobs, we have more tax-paying dollars coming, we have more people coming to the city to do things, that all benefits the city. Working hand-in-hand with the county in many aspects of our government is only going to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Fort Scott, as well as allow the city and the city people to do better jobs. We have to get past this mentality that it's us against them, or it's those people that live in the county versus the people that live in the city. And we need to start thinking about this as what we can all do together to start improving the quality of the city that we live in and the county that we live in. We are all residents of the same area. We need to start to work together and get past anything that would try to divide us. Because our common goal, and I think everyone up here on this stage with me would agree, is to make this area better. Because what we're doing now is what we're gonna leave to our kids. And my kids are gonna stay around here, because I love this town, and I've raised them to love this town. And I want what we leave them to be something that will be beneficial to them and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Warren.
Judy Warren.
I think we're all on the same page here, and I have a special interest outside of everybody else here. else here, working with the kids in the school district that will grow up and be future citizens and hopefully workers and productive people in the city of Fort Scott. I think combining the resources, if we all make the effort, which will take some effort, I kind of like to be the soothsayer and get people together and get them all on the same page. I give it my best shot, but I think that would be the best thing to do.
It's going to be Josh Jones.
Josh Jones.
When I first started on the commission, nine, 10 months ago, this was a big goal of mine. We could see what city and county not working together can do, and that's, we've seen that with the hospital. We live in a small community that's shrinking, and so if we're not all on the same bus, I mean, it's not going nowhere. So that was a big goal of mine, and I think if you talk to the county commissioners, ask them how they think it's worked so far, I mean, I think they've been pleased. When this first started, it was said that it would never happen because it's been tried for five, six, seven years, and it just couldn't happen because there's so many egos in the room. And so really, no matter who you elect, you need to make sure the three people getting elected can work well with each other. And the relationship we have with the county has to stay, and we need to evolve to USD 234 and the Juco as well, all taxing entities. We all need to be on the same page. We're not 1-1-1, we're all in this together because every taxpayer pays taxes to everyone. And when we combine services, it helps lower taxes and looks out for everyone. But I'd just say this, it's been a vital part of how we've been able to lower taxes this year, has been the joint city-county sharing of services. Consolidation is not something I want to see totally, but the sharing of service to save taxpayers is vital, important. And like I said, that's one reason why we were able to have such a good budget this year, lower property taxes the most in the last 20 years, give raises, something that wasn't done, and we just got to continue to keep doing that.
Thank you. Ann Michael Hoyt.
I think any combination of services with the county and the city have to go with what Tim said, benchmarks, performance guidelines, add some objectives. The difference between the county and the city is the city people pay county taxes, but the county people don't pay city taxes. So we should make sure that we're allocating the resources appropriately. It was obvious to be, to be involved, I stayed, went and caught involved with the county because it was important, because the city resides within the county, and we all can grow together instead of growing apart. There's no reason for the division, east side, west side, county, city. We all want to prosper as citizens and growing businesses. That's what we should be focused on, and benchmarks, to make sure that what our lowering of taxes, I question that. But we should provide benchmarks and demonstrate accountability to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final question.
Matthew Wells.
Matthew Wells. It's more of a tell us about yourself question. Please tell us how long you've lived in the city of Fort Scott, if you own your own home, and about your work and any volunteering that you have done in our community.
Sweet. I have lived here since 1987. As I said in my opening, I own my own home. Most of you have probably seen it, it's a big yellow house. I like the color yellow. The yellow is the color that I wear every day on my shirts in the business that I own, which is here in town. I've worked my entire life in this town. I started out, out of college, working at the hospital. I became the plant manager, worked with Mercer for many years until the opportunity arose where I could start my own business. I volunteer constantly at the fort because I believe in what the fort's benefit to this city is. I've been able to be in films and many other things there at the fort. If you ever get to go and check it out, it's amazing what we have locally that we can draw people in with. I volunteer in many other civic organizations. I've been working constantly with my church. I help out coaching many different teams, football, baseball, soccer, basketball. I believe that volunteering is what is vital to this community, all of us working together. I know, I keep harping on that because I think it is so important that we decide as a community to draw together as one people with one goal in mind and work towards that. And I ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Hoyt.
Michael Hoyt. Please tell us how long you've lived in the city of Fort Scott, if you own your own home, and about your work and volunteer activities in the community.
Well, I do own my own home, just doesn't have to be in Fort Scott, but I own property here and in Arizona. I moved here full-time, like I said in my opening statement, in 2017. I am a new individual member of the chamber. I have spearheaded a law enforcement and judiciary advisory board at the county level to begin a GED program for eligible inmates at our jail, so if they are released into our community, we can maybe guarantee that at least they have a fighting chance with a high school diploma. I'm also working with a friend of mine who happens to be a retiring chairman of the Altera Corporation, which is formerly, well, they're still Philip Morris, but Altera is their parent, to begin an anti-vaping or vaping education program with the schools and in the county.
Work and volunteer activities in the community.
My volunteer activities, I've worked since 2014 with veterans to help them with compensation claims, also disabled and the disenfranchised folks that, we had a long discussion about the homeless, I have some ideas on that that I would like to present when we can allocate some budget money towards that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Rollins.
Ann Rollins. Tell us how long you've lived in the city of Fort Scott, if you own your own home, and about your work and volunteer activities in the community.
Well, as I said, we've been here two and a half years. We have three stories in the house, we use all three stories, plus a big salon in the back of it. We have to use our cell phones to talk to each other, which is kind of nice when you have two teenagers in the house. But I am retired, I don't have to work, but what I found was the old Fort Genealogical Society, and I would spend at least eight hours a day, there were times when I was there for 14 hours. I used to say, if the light's on, come on down because I'm here. And right now, we're closed, but we are still doing our volunteer work for research from our homes. So we have some volunteers that are actually doing what we can until we can get back in the building and we can actually go back to work with our research material. That's what I think is important here, is that we all find a niche where we can volunteer, however many hours we can volunteer, and do everything we can to draw people into it. One of the things that we did, and it just was a conversation that I had with, I want to say it was Pete Allen, that, about the Bourbon County tours and how the people were missing those. So through a conversation, and your time is up, okay.
Thank you.
Josh Jones.
Josh Jones. Do you need me to repeat the question? Tell us how long you've lived in the city of Fort Scott, if you own your own home, and please explain your work and any volunteer activities that you are involved in in the community.
Yeah, like I said before, my ancestors came to Bourbon County in the mid-1800s, and we've been here ever since. Me and my wife bought our first home right after we got married 21 years ago. Since then, I've been lucky enough to be self-employed, start a business, and earlier talking about property taxes, you know, we have close to 50 houses in town and a couple buildings, and there's no one, there's no one more interested in lowering property taxes than myself. You know, charity work, part of Kewana's. Five years ago, I was lucky enough to walk into Bourbon County Cars and meet one of the nicest people I've ever met, David Shepherd. And in the last five years, one thing he's taught me is charity work, you know, behind the scenes and stuff like that. And so he's really taught me that, you know, life's about a few things, and giving to people and helping people out, I mean, it means a lot. It's more than, you know, you live day to day, there's problems and everything, but when you give to people, it just feels so much better. And I'm proud living in Fort Scott and the volunteerism here in Fort Scott. I mean, not just myself, Matt, he participated, and Pete, when we did the tennis courts. Seth needed him a couple years ago on the parks, and there was nearly 40 or 50 people down there doing work. And I tell people to come to Fort Scott. The best thing about Fort Scott is the people and the volunteerism. And so that's just one thing I want to continue to see happen. Thanks.
Thanks, Josh.
Judy Warren.
Judy Warren. 90 seconds.
I moved to Fort Scott about two and a half years ago. I own my own home. I do work for USD 234 at Eugene Ware. Let's see, I volunteered with the Friends of the Fort the first year I moved here. They were doing the candlelight tours of the fort, I got involved in that, loved it. Missed it last year because we couldn't have it, and I asked the man in charge if we were going to do it again this year, and he said yes, and I said, put my name down. Let's see, what else? I am on the planning commission for the city, and you know, I don't know if you haven't figured it out already, those of you in the audience that know me, know that I love Fort Scott. I, you know, I help with Ms. Lindsay once in a while when they need somebody at the visitor's center on Saturdays. So when people come in, I tell them how wonderful Fort Scott is, and you know, they're, well, I just might buy a house and retire and move here, so.
Yes, you did, thank you. And I believe Tim Van Hooky is the last one.
Yes, what a great town. My wife and I actually bought our house four and a half years ago. We were blessed to be able to move here full-time in December of 2018, which was before COVID. Where I work and what I do, I work for a company called Thermal Fisher Scientific. I'm actually an environmental health and safety specialist as well as first responder. We support the folks and pharmaceutical companies that make the COVID-19 vaccines. We provide the PPE for these workers. After 9/11, we were heavily engaged with state and the federal team on making sure that we had everything we needed in case we needed to be prepared for another attack. And then Katrina, I was actually worked on Katrina after Hurricane Katrina. So I do have a very good spirit of giving. There's no more satisfaction in my job is when parents go to work in the morning and they come back to their kids exactly the same as when they left that day. The city does a great job of sucking you in to volunteer. I immediately was put on the Good Old Days Committee, I got pulled into the Rotary Club, I'm a member of the VFW and the American Legion, and of course, Mary Queen of Angels Church. So great community, they've opened us, they've welcomed us with open arms and embraced us, and my wife is sitting there smiling because she absolutely loves this place as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move into the portion of the forum where you each have two minutes to give a closing statement. First up.
Tim Van Hooky.
Before they close and everybody runs off, did you tell about how they, how many will get, how many years?
I did, okay, so three will get elected, the top two vote getters will get a four-year term, and the third will get a two-year term. Just keep that in mind. So Tim Van Hooky, you're up.
Thank you again to the chamber, everyone in the audience, and the candidates on the stage as well. I've walked many miles and put flyers on a lot of doors, but the best part has been meeting our citizens and talking about our city. I appreciate those that have supported me, put signs in their yards, or attended at the meet and greets. Our city has a lot of great people living in it and some great potential. After seeing the results of the downtown cleanup and the murals, I know that our city is still a viable canvas, and together we can paint the picture we want for our future. It was done as a unified community. Most of the candidates, apparently most of them have been very gracious to me, our city, and stuck to the issues. That's why I was surprised when one of the candidates up here tonight, and I'm not going to point that person out, thought it would be beneficial to himself to share a Facebook post with pictures of my signs in the yards of a few of my supporters to reflect that if they've supported me, I must be the wrong guy. I can tell you that some of these folks have held office, some are former city employees or county employees, some have small businesses and some I met at one of my meet and greets. All of them still love our city. I don't quite understand why the need was felt to photograph their homes and label them by name. Personally, it's kind of creepy that someone would do this. I have a lot of signs out there, even some big ones, but not all of these were photographed and shared, just a few select citizens. So I'm asking here tonight in this forum that he respects them as the same citizens he wants to represent, and that he stops it. It would make, I would make the same request on behalf of anyone else up here on this stage or any of the citizens. I've never liked and I will not tolerate a bully. If you want to come after me on the issues, I'm your huckleberry. We need to work together as a community to exploit our strengths, and this kind of divisive, disruptive, and non-protective rhetoric prevents unity and holds our small city back. If anyone here tonight wants a yard sign, I have some in the back where I will happily bring you one, and hopefully you can make the Facebook parade of homes. So I commit to you tonight that whether you vote for me or against me, or actively campaign against me.
And your time has expired.
Honored for the opportunity to represent the city. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you.
Michael Hoyt.
Michael Hoyt, two minutes.
My intention, if elected or not elected, is to remain in Fort Scott. My family was here for 150 years, my grandparents are buried here, I have an uncle that are buried in the National Cemetery, so I like to say my roots run pretty deep. I care about the city, I care about the county, and I would look forward to working with both of those government entities to do a cooperation to make our county better. I do represent veterans, and I would welcome anyone to call me if they need help with their benefits. I recently spoke at the VFW, and they are now aware that I can help their service officer fulfill your compensation claim needs. I've helped several veterans in the community. HIPAA laws prohibit me of mentioning their names because they are disabled. It's been my pleasure to work with the county and the city, and I hope to hold everyone accountable, and my mantra is, let's do everything right every time, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Warren.
Judy Warren.
Well, I'm glad you're all here tonight. I like to start every day of my life on a positive note, and I like to end the day on the same thing. I think those of you that are in the audience here are probably here to decide who you're going to vote for. You have your work cut out for you, we have some great candidates up here, and admittedly, I think I'm one of them, but you know, that's your call, not mine. I can be reached if you want to call me. I have a spam blocker on my phone, so if you want to contact me, send me a text and I will call you. I will finally give my yard signs Friday. My first company let me down, so I found a young man here in town that promised he'd have my yard signs for me, and I have the magnetic signs on my car. I love Fort Scott and I intend to stay here, so please keep in mind that everybody up here wants the same thing for Fort Scott. We may, oh, I've got another minute? All right. We may not always agree, but I think we have a gentleman in the crowd tonight, and I probably, I don't want to embarrass him, but he was at the commission meeting last night, and he said the most honest and true words that I've heard at any of the commission meetings, and he's a class act, and his name is Rob Harrington, and he's sitting at the back. He's a fine, he's a fine gentleman, and we have a lot of good people in this town on the committee, and I'm down to 30 seconds, and I would like for you to vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Jones.
Josh Jones.
Kind of had a speech in my mind, but a couple of candidates said some stuff today that made me think. Mike Miles earlier talking about morale, and not just in school, but in Fort Scott, the morale's down, and kind of talked on what Mr. Van Hooky said. Attack on candidates and not ideas, I mean, that's been the problem for the last few years in Fort Scott. If you have a problem with the idea, I mean, let's debate that, but don't attack the candidate. This is why stuff doesn't get done. Um, this is why stuff doesn't get done. We have commissioners, we have candidates, we have citizens that continually attack people and not their ideas. We're not all going to agree every time. During the commissioners, a lot of time it's three to two. Our democracy is set up like that. If you're on the losing side, that's just part of it. It's worked for hundreds of years for us. The goal and the idea is to get your ideas, present them, you know, and tell why your idea is better. Not if you're on the losing side, get mad, throw fit, call names and call candidates out. Over the last year, um, had the pleasure of working, meeting a lot of new people. Rob Harrington, uh, me and Rob talk constantly, daily. Um, some of the county commissioners, um, was friends with before. It's been a pleasure and honor to, um, build a relationship that hopefully will go on for generations and generations of the way county and city can work together to save taxpayers. It's more than just, when you go to the polls, it's more than just picking one person. One person with one idea can't get nothing done. Two people can't get nothing done. It takes three people to change anything in our, the way our system is. So if you can't have people willing to work with each other and accomplish the goals, give and take, and it's just their way or the highway, nothing will ever get done. So all I ask when you go and vote, you know, if you vote for me, great. But vote for three candidates that can work with each other to actually accomplish something and to help Fort Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Wells.
Matthew Wells?
I use technology that often, bear with me. All right, you know what? Not too long ago, I had the opportunity to work with a bunch of great people. Josh was one of them when we went out there and we worked on those tennis courts. And one of the things that amazed me the most about that is that you had a whole bunch of people come together, a whole bunch of people who were willing to give their time and work together. Now, there were people out there on the tennis court that didn't agree with one another. There are people in this audience that don't agree with one another. But one thing's for sure, that if we all decide what's right and what's good, we can all help each other do something that's great for this town. And that's what's important. This town and what we can do for this town. Because that's why we should be running for this position. That's why everybody out there should be trying to do something. Because we have decided that Fort Scott is not only the place that we want to live and raise our families, but it's the place that we want to sow into. We want to do what we can do to make this town the best town that it can be. You'll hear me talk a lot about historic Fort Scott because that's one of the things that we lay hold to. We've got an awesome fort. We've got the Ellis Center. We've got the National Cemetery, number one. We've got the Gordon Parks Museum. We had the very first black American troops to ever fight for this country, form up on the parade grounds over there behind us at the fort and fight for this country and die for it. And they didn't care about anything else than serving their fellow man and trying to make this place better. And so when you go to that ballot box to make your vote, I ask you to keep that in mind. I want to make this place better. I want to make it better for my kids, for your kids, and for everybody's kids to come. And that should be the decision that we make. What's best for our community in all things. And sometimes that means you have to work with people that you may not agree with. And that's okay because it's all about what's best for everyone.
Thank you. I believe Ann Rollins is the last to go.
I am hoping that your votes will give me an opportunity to become your city commissioner. Tourism is an easy way to create jobs and volunteers to tell the Fort Scott story. There is so much history to bring to our community and visitors. We not only have tours galore in our community, but we have parks that can be expanded for family stays, fishing, boating, and summer fun. We have archaeology that is being explored. We have a community college that is active and has the potential for more. What I am telling you are a few of the good things I see from one who has lived in dull and hopeless areas. Fort Scott is neither dull nor hopeless. Our family feels like we hit the gold line, the big nugget, when we came to Fort Scott. The things to fix is already on its way to being fixed due to two commissioners who followed up with their campaign promise, which was to concentrate on infrastructure. I am willing to support their goal to clean up the sewer and water lines and to fix our streets. I don't know how to do the job of these must-do projects, but I do know how to live and spend frugally with a purpose in mind. My pledge is to do what I can to build a positive view of our community and to make it more livable. I have lots of ideas and I'm asking you to vote for me, Ann Rollins, so I can share my vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give each of these candidates a round of applause for their time this evening. I want to thank each and every one of you, candidates and audience members for taking your time, uh, November 2nd. If you don't know where your polling place is, contact Ashley Shelton at the courthouse. Choose or write in the name that you feel best represents each position. But please, whatever you do, get out and vote. Thank you all. And thank you to our timer and Neil Gugnati. It's encouraging to have a high school student here this evening.